I'd like to call the Monday, September 13th, 2021, Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting in Order. If everyone could please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to thank you and welcome everybody this evening, those watching at home. If I could, please have Mr. Mallon perform a roll call.
Thank you. Planning Commissioner Veal.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Cradoff.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Honeycutt. Planning Commissioner Banks.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Billups.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Peel.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Graham.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Stockenberry. Planning Commissioner Roar.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Hose.
Here.
And Chair Sanderson.
Here.
All right, we do have a call.
All right, thank you. Tonight's agenda consists of Item 1A, the minutes from the August 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Items 2, 3, and 4, rezoning, PRO, concept plan, and preliminary plat for Eagles Ridge Estates, fifth plat. Items 5 and 6 is site design review, site plan design review, and final plat for Mo betta's. Item 7, site plan design review for Hawaiian Brothers. Items 8, 9, PRO, final plan and final plat for Eagles Ridge Estates, third plat. Item 10, other business, and item 11 is adjournment. At this time, I entertain a motion for the consent agenda for the approval of the August 23rd meeting minutes.
Sure.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that the minutes from August 23rd, 2021, with a option to correct the vote count for application RZ 0621-7847 to 3I and 5NO before entry into public record.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Peel with those amendments. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Roar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? So that motion carries. I now open the public hearing for Agenda items 2 and 3, rezoning, RZ 0821-7919, and PRO, concept plan, PROC 0821-7920 for Eagles Ridge Estates, fifth plat. It will also include Agenda item 4, preliminary plat, PP 0821-7921. We'll hear all the items together and then vote on them separately, and I would ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. For RZ 0821-7919, Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments, Exhibit 2, applicant plans with attachments, 3, affidavit of publication in the examiner on August 28, 2021, 4, 185-foot notification map, 5, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, 6, copy of the letter sent to said property owners, 7, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 8, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. And for PROC 0821-7920, I offer the following exhibits into the record. 1, staff report with attachments, 2, applicant plans with attachments, 3, affidavit of publication in the examiner on August 28, 2021, 4, 185-foot notification map, 5, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, 6, copy of the letter sent to said property owners, 7, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and 8, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
All right, thank you. I would now ask for the staff's presentation. Ms. Bright.
Before you this evening, our request for rezoning, PRO, concept plan amendment, and a preliminary plat for Eagles Ridge Estates, fifth plat, a proposed 32-lot, single-family subdivision expansion covering approximately 10.55 acres. The property is located northwest of southwest Newport Drive and west of southwest Fifth Street and is currently zoned general business. The first request is to rezone the entire 10.55 acres to SF7, and currently the property is zoned GB, which was preliminary plotted in 2017 and included in the Eagles Ridge Estates' PRO concept plan, which was approved and amended in 2016. That plan included this property being general business and set aside for commercial use, but the applicant is requesting to rezone. Staff considers the rezoning appropriate since there will still be general business zoning for the entire Eagles Ridge subdivision just northwest of southwest Major Road and Seven Highway. The PRO concept plan and preliminary plat covers the entire 10.55 acres. The development plan includes 32 single lots, single-family lots, and one tract for a density of 3.03 units per acre. Access to the site is provided through the existing street connection from Seven Highway onto Eagles Ridge Drive, and a temporary road will be installed connecting to Seven Highway until substantial completion of South Gate Drive. A five-foot sidewalk will be installed along Seven Highway, and five-foot sidewalks are also required on one side of the street within the entire subdivision. The applicant is required a 25-foot landscape buffer along Seven Highway, and since the plan is proposing single-family housing, the applicant is proposing a six-foot privacy fence and a berm where possible to create a visual and audio buffer. The previously approved concept plan for the Eagles Ridge subdivision had a minimum 8% open space requirement for SF7 zoning and a 10% active open space requirement. The applicant is proposing a detention pond and track day, which doesn't count towards the open space requirement, but the open space requirements are being met by previously proposed and approved plans. Contingent upon approval of this phase addition, Eagles Ridge Estates will have 20.54% open space and 13.73% active open space. The existing neighborhood pool and walking trail system installed in earlier phases will service this phase. The applicant requested and was approved for one deviation from the standards of the UDC, which has already been approved by City Council, and that was for a 15-foot corner side setback on all lots. The UDC requires a 25-foot corner side setback, however, since previous phases have developed with this modification, the applicant is requesting to continue with the 15-foot corner side setback in this phase. All lots in this phase meet the minimum 7,200 square foot lot size and the 65-foot lot width requirements. This is consistent with the previously approved phases of the Eagles Ridge Estates subdivision. The applicant intends for the minimum livable floor area to be 1,800 square feet unless the house is a true ranch in which will have a minimum livable floor area of 1,600 square feet. Staff believes this is appropriate since it matches the declarations and restrictions that have been recorded by the existing HOA. The housing style will remain consistent with what is currently in Eagles Ridge as shown by the photographs provided. In addition to the landscape buffer, the applicant will be required to meet the street tree requirement and a 45-plant unit minimum on each lot. Staff reviewed the rezoning request and finds that the proposed rezoning to single-family is complementary to existing and previously approved developments in the area. Staff reviewed the PRO concept plan and finds that the plan is cohesive with the existing homes in the area. The reduction in the corner side setback is warranted based off the previously approved code deviation and will provide consistency throughout the Eagles Ridge Estates subdivision. Although the housing will be directly adjacent to Seven Highway, staff feels as though the applicant has provided an enhanced buffer to help mitigate concerns of single-family housing along an arjerial. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, approval of the PRO concept plan with five conditions, and approval of the preliminary plat with five conditions, and I am here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff by the commissioners? Commissioner Billups.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you can help or someone else on the staff. Help me with my memory here. The preliminary plan that was presented before, I believe, for this lot, did that, is that where there was a proposed grocery store, or was that on the south?
That was on the...
Eagles Ridge.
Yeah, that was on the south side of Eagles Ridge Drive. The conceptual plan that was provided for this property was similar style development but smaller retail shops with a few pad sites out front, but the larger grocery store development was reserved at the intersection of Major Road.
Was down on the corner at Major?
Correct.
Okay, so that's still on the books?
Yes, that plan has not been amended.
Okay. And I think you kind of briefly touched on this. You don't have any concern about the fact that we're giving up our limited amount of highway frontage, business frontage for more residential?
We didn't have any concern with rezoning, or I guess losing some commercial frontage. There's quite a bit of undeveloped commercial frontage all the way down, up and down Seven Highway, even north of Moreland School Road. There's significant commercial zoning that is, remains undeveloped. Staff's main concern was rezoning to single-family up against Seven Highway, and we had multiple discussions with the applicant on how to mitigate some of that, and that's where we came in with the enhanced buffer with a privacy fence, berms, and landscaping to help mitigate concerns with single-family up against Seven Highway.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners? Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation or provide any additional comments? You'll need to be sworn in and state your name and address for the record, please.
If you sound swear, this is a sworn-in party in this case, we have three sub y'all.
I do. Robert Walkwith, 19101 Hideaway Lane, Greenwood, Missouri.
Thank you for taking the time to review this. We appreciate staff's, all the input. We've been going back and forth, I think about four years on this. We kind of kicked it around, and then staff says it wasn't appropriate at the time, so we kind of tabled it, and then with the market the way it is, the client is enjoying doing business in Blue Springs and really has a good response with the market that he's got right now. He feels that leaving that commercial would not help his value for his residence because it's just going to be vacant for many, many years, so he feels like if he puts this in that that would help his overall development, and he likes to have his name on that and show that. Now, he does that commercial down south. We have kicked that around a few times. We actually got architect and everything. We had a full set of construction documents for that grocery store and restaurant with outdoor seating and all that, but something came up between a conflict of interest between Price Chopper and the client, so they couldn't move forward with that. They have went with staff and looked into a mixed-use development down there, which would be residential above retail, and they're doing that right now in Grain Valley and trying to see how that model works out, and then maybe next year come back with that. We have been with, meeting with staff regarding that, but we haven't moved forward with that. We just, it's a concept right now, so. And then we did just put in the poolhouse clubhouse for the duplexes, because we have one for the residential, for the single-family side back in the development along with a lot of open space, so. But I'll answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions for the applicant from the commissioners? See none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of this project? Oh, yep, yeah. Please come forward. You'll need to be sworn in. State your name and address for the record, please.
If you sound swear, this is a sworn-in party in this case, we have three sub y'all.
Yes. Hi, Jana Huque, 412 Southwest Newport Drive.
If you can just, if you can step up to the mic, sorry.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, yep.
412 Southwest Newport Drive. I'm not opposed. I'm here to just raise concern.
Okay, can you state your name one more time in the mic?
Yep, Jana Huque, H-U-K-E.
Thank you.
I, I'm coming. I'm on the original side. I'm the HOA president for Eagles Ridge Single Family, and so I'm coming here just to speak on behalf of everybody there. We think it's great that that's going to be changed over, hopefully to, you know, the single-family instead of the commercial, so we are in favor of that. And we have been talking to the developer about merging the HOAs, and so I think that's very important because we are in management of the HOA today, and the pool is in the HOA single-family home name. And so we're just trying to blend that together and make that an urgency as we add all these homes into the neighborhood. And then another thing is just making sure that the retention or detention ponds are maintained. A lot of the development is maintained when need be, and so it's just, that's been a big concern with people.
Okay.
So that's it.
All right, any questions for this witness by the commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Banks.
Was your main concern the detention, or I don't know?
Why I'm here, why I'm up here.
You are not opposed, but I mean...
I'm not opposed. I'm just trying to, because we have had a ginormous growth in that neighborhood, which is wonderful to us. It's just making sure that we're conscious of the detention ponds and the maintenance of the area as we build and do that and join a community in HOAs and how we do that, because it is, you know, we are, the wards have been wonderful. We've been working together, but we're trying to figure out how to make sure that we don't have separate segregations of HOAs and make it a great community and upkeep and giving them answers of when things are going to be done and complete so we can all know what's going on. So that's, it's not a negative thing. It's just, I just wanted to kind of put it out there.
Put it on public record?
Yep.
I would, I would say that basically communicate with the developer.
Yep.
Especially you, and then communicate with your residents.
Yep, and it's hard sometimes. It's very busy, as I can say. It's, there's a lot of stuff going on, so clear communication all the time is very difficult, but we do have good communication, but just trying to state it for the people back probably listening right now, so that's it.
All right.
But we do, we're in favor of that changeover.
Thank you for bringing that forward, though. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any, sorry, any other questions for this witness? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Any other, anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of this project? Okay, bring it back up here for any further discussion from the commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Banks.
I'm sorry. The only thing I'd like to comment is I do want to appreciate the fact that they're considering and they're going, following staff with the fencing, the buring, and everything along Seven Highway, because I think that's, that would be something that's, I appreciate it. So consider the neighbors. Thank you.
Any other comments by the commissioners? I'm going to close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on the rezoning.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that rezoning request, RZ 0821-7919, for Eagles Ridge Estates, fifth plat, be approved as submitted by staff.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second from Commissioner Veal. This will be a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Cradoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Roar. Commissioner Veal.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hose.
Aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Aye.
That motion passes with unanimous vote?
All right, so that motion carried, and it'll be recommended and heard by the City Council at their Monday, September 20th meeting at 6:00 PM. I would now ask for a motion on the PRO concept plan.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that planned residential overlay concept plan, PROC 0821-7920, for Eagles Ridge Estates, fifth plat, be approved as submitted by staff.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
That's the five conditions, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second from Commissioner Veal. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Roar.
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Veal.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hose.
Aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so that motion also carried with the five staff conditions. This will be recommended and heard, this item will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their Monday 20th meeting at 6:00 PM. And finally, I'd ask for a motion on the preliminary plat.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move the preliminary plat, PP 0821-7921, for Eagles Ridge Estates, fifth plat, with the five conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second from Commissioner Veal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, so that motion carried with the five staff conditions. All right, next items on the agenda are Items 5 and 6, Site Plan Design Review and Final Plat for Mo betta's. I would ask for staff comments from Ms. Kelly.
Good evening. The next item on the agenda for your consideration are applications for the final plat and site plan design review for Mo betta's restaurant, which will be located at 806 Northwest Seven Highway, formerly a Long John Silver's fast-food restaurant, which is located east of Seven Highway, south of Mock Avenue. The property is zoned GB General Business and includes approximately 0.76 acres. The proposed building is a one-story pad site building, approximately 2,727 square feet. The upper half of the building's exterior facade is largely composed of brick and ephes, while the lower half is composed of glazing and corrugated metal panels. The proposed variety of building materials and architectural details help provide four-sided design and architectural interest by breaking up the building facade on all four sides of the building. Staff believes the conceptual building renderings meet the intent of the building design standards. The proposed building meets all development standards for setbacks and height. All vehicle parking requirements have also been met on the site. Based on the location and land use, one bike parking place is required. This requirement has been met. Pedestrian access is required. Currently, no public sidewalk exists along the portion of Northwest Seven Highway abutting this property. Prior to occupancy, ADA-compliant sidewalk along Northwest Seven Highway must be installed as required by MoDOT and Public Works. Due to insufficient space in the public right-of-way, a sidewalk easement is being dedicated on the site. MoDOT plans to extend the median along Missouri Seven Highway in the future, tentatively in the year 2024. The applicant has been made aware that this will affect access to and from the site. Two shared cross-access drives will be installed, one connecting the properties adjacent to the north and south on the east or rear edge, and one connecting the site to the property on the south on the east or front edge. On July 26, 2021, the Planning Commission approved a preliminary plat with conditions and recommended the approval of the general development plan with one condition. On August 2nd, 2021, City Council approved the general development plan with one condition. Staff recommends approval of the final plat with three conditions and the site plan design review with two conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for staff by the commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
The northeast exit, that'll be an exit, is that correct, through the other properties?
Are you right here? Can you see my?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for staff by the commissioners? All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak?
I'm here representing Mo betta's, but I don't have any, I don't think, but I can tell you my name. It's Frank Newman with Frank Newman Commercial Real Estate, and I'm here representing Mo betta's tonight.
Okay.
My address is 116 West 47th Street, Kansas City, Missouri. And, but I'm just here to observe and answer any questions.
Okay, is there any questions for the applicant?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Mr. Newman, would they, would Mo betta's look at doing a right in and right out only on that first entry, egress in and egress out being a right turn?
On Seven Highway?
Yes.
If you could, sorry, if you could put your mask on, sorry.
Oh, sure, okay. So I believe that this has all been discussed and negotiated with the city. I believe in 2024, the median is going to be extended.
Right.
So they're fine with that at that time.
But it'd be nice if they go ahead and put a sign of right turn only out of, out of the restaurant. The only reason I say that is because if they come out and they try to go south, they're going to cross several lanes of traffic, and there's a potential, before they put that median in, of some accidents occurring at that location.
Mm-hmm.
But after the median goes in, then they'll have no choice. They'll have to go either out the northeast driveway, or they'll have to do right out of the restaurant. So if you start them off early, I think you'd be better prepared for when that median does go in.
Right, so I can't make any final decisions for Mo betta's, just being their real estate broker, but I can tell you that they're very comfortable because of the back cross-access at the northeast, the southeast, and then also there's cross-access into the shopping center at the southwest location, too. So there's tons of access, so they're very comfortable with that. And then it was just their understanding that in 2024 is when that would be cut, and they were comfortable either way. So as far as that, it's going to, you'd have to, I can't make that decision, or I can recommend, I can recommend it to them, but I just, I don't make that decision.
Understood. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Any further discussion by the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Billups.
I'd just like to say I'm glad we're reusing an existing site, getting rid of a vacant building, and welcome to town.
Any other discussion by the commissioners? All right, then I would entertain a motion for the site plan design review.
Chair.
Commissioner Veal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan design review, SPDR 08-21-7914.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Veal. Do I have a second?
With the two conditions.
Oh, thank you very much, thank you. A motion from Commissioner Veal with the two staff conditions. Do I have a second? Have a second from Commissioner Roar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carried with the two staff conditions, and I would entertain a motion for the final plat.
Chair.
Commissioner Veal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve final plat, PF 08-21-7913, for Mo betta's.
With the...
With the three conditions.
Very good, yep. And Commissioner Veal has made a motion for approval with three staff conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Peel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carried with three staff conditions. It will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their Monday, September 20th meeting at 6:00 PM. All right, next item on the agenda is Item 7, Site Plan Design Review for Hawaiian Brothers, and I would ask for the staff presentation by Mr. McGee.
Thank you, Chair Sanderson. The next item on agenda is a request for a site plan designer approval to remodel the Farmer Neaters Bakery located 800 Northeast Coronado Drive for Hawaiian Bros. Island Grill Restaurant. The existing building is approximately 3,844 square foot drive-through restaurant building and developed as a pad site. The remodeling meets all the requirements and complies with the non-residential... The remodeling meets all the requirements and complies with the non-residential design guidelines. The exterior building will modify the existing building, including new wall materials and exterior painting. Rooftop equipment will be screened with metal wall panels. The applicant will be installing aluminum siding with wood, wood, wood look, all new windows and a new awning over the drive-through pickup windows along the north facade. In addition, in replacing canopies, other building renovations include adding a second drive-through window and raising the, um, parapet height in selected locations. A new pergola will be added over the outdoor seating area on the west side of the building. The appearance review committee reviewed and re- recommended approval of the site plan design review application on September second, two thousand twenty-one. Staff recommends approval of the site plan design review with one condition. I'll be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff by the commissioners?
Chair?
Commissioner Peel.
Yes, I understand that section four oh three dot zero seven zero, item B of U D C, uh, kind, tries to discourage the use of aluminum, uh, panels on buildings, and I kinda question why they're using aluminum, even though it's toned as a wood. I would rather see a brick for an ear or something like that used instead of the aluminum.
I've let the applicant respond to the, the reason for their usage of that material.
Okay, thank, thank you, Matt. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff, or, yeah, other commissioners? All right, thank you. Uh, would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation or answer any questions? You just need to state your name and address, please.
Absolutely, thank you. Mitch Trusker, thirteen twenty-one Granton Lane, Raymore, Missouri, and I'm the Vice President of Development for Hawaiian Bros., so happy to answer any and all questions.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Veal, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr. Trusker is, can you answer that question about why they're using aluminum panels instead of wood, or like a brick for an ear, like the, they're painting it blue in, in this sketch?
We, um, so the, the wood look panel, uh, we, we have used several different variations of that, all Nietzsche-ha, uh, for lack of a better description. Um, the manufactured wood look that you see, like on a deck, um, and we're running into a real problem with, um, availability of that product because a lot of, a lot of restaurants and, and different retailers use that. So, we, we spent quite a bit of time researching, uh, alternate products that have a wonderful look, and, and I do have a, an extra, um, item to present if, if need be. It's a very rich-looking material. It comes in twenty-four foot lengths, and if you're familiar with metal grades, it's sixteen gauge. It's a very sturdy, um, gauge of material, and it looks wonderful. It, it's not something that we took lightly. We wanted to make sure we had a, a good product. Uh, it's, it's, um, isolated to the northwest corner and southeast corner of the building and helps accent all the other materials that we're using, uh, drive-it, um, uh, surface-mounted, uh, brick. We've, we've got quite a bit of wood material, cedar and redwood incorporated, uh, into the design of the building. We, we feel like we've, we're building a very quality, uh, addition to, to Blue Springs.
Okay, also, Mr. Trusker is, I understand that the screening is also gonna be aluminum panel, is that correct?
Uh, there are some screen panels on the building, yes, and that, that's a, um, a heavier gauge metal, but it's, it's accent, um, it's an accent look, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the applicant by the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Cradoff.
How do you plan on us utilizing the parking area? I know in the past Neaters had, uh, kinda combined their parking with Home Depot, and everybody kinda parked there. Do you have any plan of separation and designate how?
Uh, no, there, there is cross-parking with Home Depot. They're actually out there repaving, uh, a lot of it right now. Uh, we're providing thirty-eight parking spaces, thirty were required. Uh, obviously, the drive-through lane will be one-way, uh, but we, uh, uh, we have nineteen restaurants open now. By the end of the year, we'll have thirty. Uh, and we're getting very, very good at taking, um, second-gen buildings, um. In Lee Summit, we took a Steak and Shake that had been vacant for years and, and remodeled it. We took an old Shoney's, um, Sheridan's Custard at I seventy and Nolan Road and, and remodeled that. And based on, on that history, we know what kind of track, traffic will generate, and, and we feel the, the thirty-eight plus, uh, the cross-access with Home Depot is, is more than enough for, for our needs.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions by the commissioners for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you for the time tonight.
Any other discussion by the commissioners? Commissioner Billups?
I'll, I'll repeat my same comment from earlier. Um, I'm glad you're reusing a building that's, that's vacant right now, and welcome to town. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Hose?
I will have to abstain my vote. I have a conflict of interests, unfortunately, but just bringing that to the board.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion or comments by the commissioners? All right. I would ask for a motion for, on the, uh, site plan design review.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Banks?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan design review S P D R zero eight dash two one dash seven nine one six Hawaiian Bros. With the one staff condition.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Veal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, so that motion is carried with the one staff condition.
Oh, it's, sorry. The motion carries with a vote of seven ayes, one nay, and one abstain.
All right. Next item on the agendas, uh, on the agenda is item eight and nine, uh, P R O final plan and final plat for Eagles Ridge Estates, third plat, and I would ask for the staff presentation by Ms. Kelly.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is the application for the P R O final plan and final plat for Eagles Ridge Third Plat, which is generally located east of Northwest Seven Highway and north of Southwest Eagles Ridge Drive. The property is zoned S F seven planned residential overlay and is approximately eight point four seven acres. The proposed development is the third plat of Eagles Ridge Estates and includes twenty-five single-family lots. The min- minimum house sizes are sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet, which matches the concept plan. The lot layout and sizes match the approved P R O concept plan and preliminary plat. The minimum lot size in this phase is nine thousand sixty-four square feet and seventy-three feet wide. The proposed public street network matches the approved preliminary plat. All proposed lots have access to a local street. The proposed local streets connect to a collector, Southwest Eagles Ridge Drive or Arterial Street, Seven Highway, via Southwest Third Street and Southwest Fifth Street. All proposed public pedestrian network matches the approved preliminary plat. All proposed lots have direct access to a public sidewalk or, or directly across the street from a public sidewalk. The proposed frontage design meets the minimum street tree requirements of one orn- ornamental or small shade tree for every forty feet of frontage, or one large straight, shade tree for every seventy-five feet of frontage. The proposal provides one large shade tree every seventy-five street, feet. All easements have been pro- provided as required by Public Works. Prior to final plat approval of phase nine of the Eagles Ridge subdivision, the last phase of Eagles Ridge Estates, all street trees and open space amenities such as all trails, landscaping, et cetera, adjacent to or within the open space tracks in Eagles Ridge Estates must be installed. A temporary road connection to Seven Highway was included in the construction documents, but was not constructed. Prior to final plat approval, the developer shall financially guarantee the cost of construction of the temporary road connection to Seven Highway at one hundred and twenty-five percent of the construction cost. Staff reviewed the applications and found that all review criteria has been met and allows improvements to be made to an existing site and land use. Staff recommends approval of the final plat and final plan with seven conditions. I'll stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff by the commissioners? Okay, all right, seeing none, thank you. And I would ask, the applicant would like to speak, but I don't believe they're here. Uh, any questions or discussion by the commissioners for this application?
Chair?
Commissioner Peel.
I know at one point we had some people come in on Eagles Ridge because of the streets were extremely narrow. If you had to park a car in each side of it, it was really hard to get through the streets. So I don't know whether there's a plan of making the streets a little bit wider, or maybe taking the island out of it, maybe to, for easier passage. But I know that there were several people here that did come in and complained about it was being hard to get through the subdivision. Thank you, Chair.
If there's any comment to that? Yeah, I can respond to that. Um, I believe that that was in the, the duplex portion of Eagles Ridge, uh, Villas. This is on the northern portion, and the street sizes are the standard residential street. Um, Adam, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. Uh, these, these are the standard street widths, um, so, they're, it, it matches the, the design standard for, uh, Public Works, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Matt.
I think I recall that, that was duplexes, and it was a straight street, and this is single-family with curbs. So I think they'll, it's different.
Be better off.
Yeah, I think they'll, they'll be fine with the way they've got the.
Hopefully, we won't see them again.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? I did have a quick, quick question. Ms. Kelly, on the, uh, on the connector that was gonna go to Seven Highway, if I understood you correctly, that may, they are not putting that in, but they're still providing the, the, the amount of money it would have taken to put that in. Is that correct?
Adam, do you wanna elaborate on?
That's accurate, yes, so, um, yeah, for, for those financial guarantees, we ask for a hundred and twenty-five percent of the construction cost 'cause generally, they can do it for, um, less than we can. Uh, so that's a, a security for us in the event that it's never constructed. We, as a city, are able to go in and, and do that at a later date. So, yeah, the, the actual road out to Seven Highway was a condition of, uh, one of the preliminary plats, but, um, uh, yeah, that, as we've earlier discussed, it would be included in the fifth plat of the estates, so.
Okay, understood, thank you. And if there's no other discussion, then I'll entertain a motion for the P R O final plan.
Chair?
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Peel.
Uh, I move the plan residential overlay final plan, P R O F zero eight two one seven nine two three for Eagles Ridge Estates, third plat, the, with the seven conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Peel with the seven staff conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Banks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that motion carried with the seven staff conditions. I would now ask for a motion on the final plat.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel.
I move that final plat P F zero eight two one seven nine two two for Eagles Ridge Estates, third plat, with the seven conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
I have a motion from Commissioner Peel, um, with the seven staff conditions. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Banks, second from Commissioner Banks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carried with seven staff conditions. This item will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their Monday, September twentieth meeting at six P M. And that'll take us to other business. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Chair Sanderson. Um, we will have a meeting on Monday, September twenty-seventh. We do have a few applications for that evening. And at the back of the, um, agenda packet this evening, there is the August twenty twenty-one Community Development Activity Report, which I'll quickly go through. Um, permit activity for the month of August, uh, was up, a few permits over August twenty twenty, and year-to-date, we have already reached a thousand per, over a thousand permits. Um, so that trend continues. We will have another, um, record permit year. Um, overall, for residential, we issued twelve single-family homes in the month of August, which is down from previous year. Um, but year-to-date, we are still, um, we're running around the same for both single-family and two-family. Uh, multifamily, we have not permitted any projects, but we should hopefully have a couple of projects being permitted here in the next month or two that will add to the total dwelling unit count, um, for twenty twenty-one. Um, construction costs, uh, were up in August over the previous year, and then year-to-date, we are still about twenty-five million dollars higher than we were previously, um, and a lot of that is due to, um, some of the larger industrial projects like Blue Springs Logistics Center and Amazon that were permitted earlier this year. And then inspections due to the increase in permits are also, um, higher than usual. Um, coenforcement activity, um, was up in August, and some of our top cases continue to be, um, citizen complaints related to nuisances, um, high weeds and grass and trash. Those tend to always be in the top three, um, and typically in that order. And then a lot of planning projects have come through over the past month, uh, which were also included in the packet. A couple of administrative site plans, um, that were approved, um, just in case in the near future you see any construction at William Bryant Elementary and John, um, Nalan Elementary. Those were some of the recent school projects, uh, that we reviewed. Uh, William Bryant is a classroom addition on the backside of the building, and then John Nalan was, I believe, a very small, um, renovation to the building. Most of that is an exterior parking lot and bus loop expansion, um, out along Valley View. And then signed permits, we issued ten permits in August, and then year-to-date, we are up ten permits over last year. Any questions on the August activity report?
Okay, may I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Banks.
This may be stupid. What's the ge- logistics center? I just know it, I mean, is it?
The Blue Springs Logistics.
I know it's on the outer road, right?
It is off of Jefferson and Tire Road, so it's north of Camping World.
Okay.
And there's a.
I'm getting confused with the things we've just.
Yeah, no, that's a large industrial building that's currently under construction. Actually, the exterior of it is, um, really taking shape right now. Uh, but that's a potential multi-tenant industrial.
Right, okay. Now, what's the one that we, on the outer road?
Uh, that is, was the Hoffman Project, um, and that is currently under construction, uh, for the, for the Curling Club, and then, uh,
Okay.
uh, I believe it's called, can't remember the name of the business, but it is a indoor entertainment, um, children's facility.
We do so many things sometimes.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Matt, on the development that it's, was supposed to be a, a senior development that was just east or west of the new Amazon Distribution Center?
Yes.
That looked like that came to a stop. There was all kinds of weeds growing and things like that. Looks like they took the weeds out. Is that a development still active, or is, has that dropped out?
I can answer that to what degree I can, and I may need Jackie's help at this point. Um, uh, due to the lack of construction and any kind of development activity on the site, this, the property, uh, has been cited by our codes department, uh, as being a public nuisance, uh, under the, as defined under our nuisance code for any construction activity that stopped for, uh, a period, uh, of a certain length of time. Uh, we do have, have been in contact with the applicant, uh, about their plans moving forward. Uh, they do, uh, they have let us know that they do plan to finish that development. Uh, there were some financing issues that came up with that project, uh, and we have been in contact with them over the last month, six weeks to a month, to, uh, try to get them moving on that project. And, uh, staff will have to walk the site with them to determine what of those materials is still usable, what is not usable. Uh, but they fully intend to continue with the development of that even after this long pause.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Ballin. Thank you, Matt.
May, Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question since we're going over a few things?
Commissioner Banks.
Well, I haven't seen anything at the Lux Apartments that we approved on North Seven?
Yes, that's correct. We do, uh, we just, um, checked on that today. Uh, the building permit, uh, has been. The building permit has been reviewed and approved by all of city staff, so it's just waiting to be issued to the applicant at this point. So, I would expect some things to start taking place soon. From what we're hearing from a number of projects is that there's an extreme labor shortage and there just isn't the construction crews to go around and, and do all of these projects. And so, construction crews may be finishing up another project in a different part of the city or different city, different state even potentially. And then once they wrap that one up, then they'll move up here to begin the project, so. But from the city's standpoint, the project has been reviewed and approved and it's just awaiting the developer to come pick up the plans and, and start construction.
Okay, I do want to make a correction. We denied it, the city council called it back and approved it, so that's, I'm wondering if correct what I just said.
Okay.
Any other, any other staff business?
I did have one item that was brought to my attention as a suggestion from our city clerk's office that there are times when we, when the planning commission hears cases that are controversial in nature or that the, the planning commission may want to vote to deny the project. And then it can get confusing when there's a motion made to deny the project and then there is an aye vote, which actually means you're voting no on the project. So, the suggestion has been made that, and, and this is the way that the city council carries through with their motions, is that all of the motions made are made to approve it, even if that person or that commissioner making the motion has no intention of voting to approve it, but to make the motion in the affirmative and the second in the affirmative and then that way the vote is just a simple yes for the project, no, you're voting to recommend denial of the project or to deny the project. And so, I, I told them I would bring that suggestion forward to the planning commission.
Question, to avoid confusion, is it okay when I, if, if we were to make such a motion, to preface the motion with the fact that we're going to be voting against it so that somebody doesn't, isn't influenced by the fact that I said I'm making the motion and they might think that means I'm in favor of the project?
I would ask Jackie to weigh in on that, but I, from just experience and I don't know whether it's recommended or not, I have seen the city council members do just that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I mean, you don't have to because.
But it's okay to do that?
They, they do it.
All right, thank you.
They make motions out.
They will, they, and I'm using as an example, some council member would say, I am voting in the affirmative even though I plan to vote against it, but, and, and then they go into it, but yes, that is, that is certainly acceptable to do that.
That, that will be, so that the rest of the, the cap of the committee will be, will know of our intentions. We're just trying to move it along and get it to a vote.
Yes, and it makes it less confusing than when we're, was that an aye to vote no or a no, a nay is actually voting to approve? And so, I think from just a clarity standpoint, it, it's a good suggestion. And so, if, if you guys all feel that way, then we would ask that the motions be made going forward, be made in the affirmative and that, that the votes play out depending on how each commissioner wishes to vote. Either four would be a yes vote or a nay would actually be a no vote on the project going forward.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I've watched several city council meetings because of projects that we voted on and I like to see, like, I know they watch ours too, but, just to see what we do. But they always make a motion, a first reading and then they always, you know, vote. But they always, before they do their vote, they've spoken about how they feel about the project. So, we kind of know where they stand a little bit. So, they, I think they share that with each other before, you know, in a public way so that they, we, they know that they're, we're going to make a motion to approve, but I can't go along with this. So, that they already know I'm going to vote no. So, if, if I make a motion to approve, it doesn't mean I'm going to vote yes. See what I mean? So, you need to watch some of those and you'll see what the, that he's talking about. It really helps a lot. If, if you have, I'm sure you've watched them, but it makes sense to me. So, don't ask me to make the first one.
Any other business from the staff?
No.
Any other business from the commissioners? Okay, if there's no other business, then I would move to adjournment. I would entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, I move.
Commissioner, motion from Commissioner Beal, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Roar, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this meeting is adjourned, good night.
Good night.